Welcome everybody to tonight's candidate forum for the Crescent School Board. We appreciate your attendance, glad to have you here with us. I want to introduce everybody, I've met with Mr. Ray Robbins. Appreciate him being here and Chris Channel. And we're glad to have these gentlemen express an interest in serving our school board, serving the patrons and the students and teachers of this community. And we're looking forward to hearing what they have to say. I'm going to ask Mickey Hart Superintendent Schools Chair to say a few words before we get started.
I kind of want to ditto what Mark has said. In our appreciation, we have two quality people here. I've gotten to know both of them a little bit in the last couple of months. And the students of Crescent, I think, will benefit with our forum. And hopefully, we can encourage others, make sure they go out to vote. And also, Mr. Radford, to string this forum on, what, Mark?
It's just on video now, it'll be put on our Facebook page and passed around.
For Logan County Courier.
Yeah.
So, thank you for being here.
Just so everybody knows what the format will be tonight. Reminder that the forum is sponsored by the Crescent Chamber of Commerce and also the Logan County Courier Newspaper. And we appreciate everybody's support for those two organizations. It's going to be very low-key, very cordial. It's not a debate, it's just an information session. And what we will do is, I have a series of questions that I will ask. In between the questions that I ask, questions from the audience are welcome, there should be some papers around, hand those to me, we'll ask. The gentlemen have figured out who's going to go first, so there's a fairness and saying, well, he just said what I was going to say. You know, that happens sometimes. And so, we're going to do that. They will have 90 seconds to answer their questions. And then another 90 seconds for the next one. We're going to try to be done within an hour. And if we get done sooner than that, we do. But again, thank you for being here, we appreciate that. To get started, we want to hear a little bit about you gentlemen. Chris, you won the random number generator, so if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. My name's Chris Channel. I've lived in Crescent my whole life. I went to Crescent Schools and graduated from here. I work for the Edmund Fire Department as a firefighter. And anyway, my kids go to Crescent Schools. And so, I was wanting to become a part of Crescent Schools and be able to make it better for the future students.
My name's Raymond Robbins. We wanted to live here in town for two years. We moved from Oklahoma City. We wanted to move to a small town and become part of that town. And I feel like being on the school board will help become part of the town and the community. I grew up in a small town. And I understand how important a good school system is to a small town. And so, that's why I wanted to try to help the school district, but kind of member of the school board.
Okay, thank you. That leads us into our first question. If Robbins, you have that. Why do you desire to serve on the school board?
Well, like I mentioned, in my job, I have been visiting with many, many residents and current residents and past residents. And in my conversations with them, without fail, they always say, "We loved our time in Crescent, Oklahoma." And that's really a nice thought, that people enjoy their city. Even if they don't even live here any longer, they remember the values that Crescent instilled, maybe not in them, but the grandparents or their parents that lived here and had moved away. And one way to help keep people in town is to have a strong school district, a strong school. It's important that the students, young children, middle-aged children, high school kids have the opportunity to have a solid school district to learn from.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yes. In my job that I've come into, I'm a public servant. And I've learned through that job that there's a lot of different types of civic and parental responsibilities. And in that spirit of that, coming back to serve my town where I grew up and where I live and my kids attend, I would like to be a part of something that raises the academic standards and provides a safe environment and enjoyable environment for kids in the school system. And being able to assist in that would be doing things as like getting teachers' materials they need and being able to provide time for the teachers to teach themselves.
Sure. Well, thank you on that. We have a question that was presented, it has to do with, I'm going to save it because it's something I will probably come to. We'll go into the second question that I have for you tonight on this. And Chris, I'll let you go first on this one. In your opinion, what role does a school board member have in a public school district?
Okay. I think the first and primary responsibility is to the kids of the school district. And in being able to take the tax base which provided and giving them the best opportunity they have to succeed, not only at the school, but into a collegiate level.
Anything else? Not trying to put you on the spot, just want to make sure you get...
No, I figure it's good.
Okay. Ray?
Well, a school board member, as a lot of different boards in different areas, are not here to minutely pick everything that goes on in a school. It's here to help advise the administration that is in place. I know they have meetings, will they have to approve certain financial decisions. And they have to be current on the direction that the state is going, basically in finance. And I think that's one reason why my background is so important to perhaps to any board, or perhaps a school board, as I've been a CPA for 35 years. Numbers are not foreign to me like some things are. So, I think a school board member has to be able to review numbers, review other information, and help guide the administration.
Thank you. Ray, this one's also for you. As you know, there's continuing some educational classes and some training that school board members have to take. At times, it's difficult to earn the recommended points for ongoing training for board members. How do you weigh the importance of receiving this ongoing training? This is a question from the audience.
Now, that's a good question. And as CPA, I've already inquired to why, if these courses that we're required to take will qualify to go towards my annual CPE classes. And luckily, they will. So, the financial classes that I will be required to go to, I'm looking forward to it because it'll be something out of the difference of what I've been doing, tax, CPE classes, management CPE classes. This will be a whole different direction that I'll get a chance to learn from. And you can never learn too much, and it's a lifetime experience.
Very good. Chris?
These don't really apply to my job, too bad, because we also have continuing education we have to pursue every year. So, outside of my job, my schedule is pretty flexible. I just got graduated from college, so I've got spare time. And so, I'll be able to attend those classes. I've also worked with my supervisors about taking time off for meetings and classes and education I'll have to go to, so.
Good, appreciate it. Thank you. Another question that we have, Ray, this is also for you to start with. One of the concerns that patrons have sometimes is they wonder if a school board member is riding a hobby horse onto the board. Whether they have something particular that they want to try to accomplish, or something they want to try to change. And in the past, we haven't always been able to find that out. And that's not every single case, and it's not by any means an indictment of you gentlemen having that. But we just want to know, what were three primary things that you would like to see accomplished by being on the school board? You know, it's difficult not being on the board, but... So, my ideas that you think would be some accomplishments that you'd like to see happen with the Crescent School District?
That's mine to go first, I understand.
Yes.
I've been a resident here for two years, met a few people. Hardly ever does the conversation turn towards schools when we visit with someone. So, I don't really have a windmill that I'm trying to battle at this point. I'm just here to do a good job and try and keep a school district who has a great history and to have a great future. Now, what I do want to accomplish is, like I said, it's important for a school to have, to build on their past, so they can have, to build on their future. So, I'd like to have that as one of my goals, is to have a great future for their students. Beyond that, I mean, I'd have to do some, see what's going on, to see what I might be able to help in to improve. Not knowing any problems, I'm just glad to be part of the future of a good school district.
Chris?
I have been involved with the school, with my kids, for a while. And so, there's things that, of course, you would like to see for everybody, and one of those is success in the future, and being able to help make decisions that provide that success for students and for the school itself. With my, you know, I've talked to people in the past about things that they would like to see changed in the school system, and things that used to be involved in schools that aren't particularly now. And some of those things are, you know, providing opportunities and times for kids and parents to get together at the school and perform tasks. And not only things that, you know, bring families together and the community together, but also provide either ultimate income for the school or, you know, allow them to accomplish things, such as fairs that lead into fundraising and things like that. I know the school board's main priority is to kind of an oversight committee and to help with those, facilitate those things. And another thing that I would like to do is I have a pretty vast background in community emergency response. And I would like to see either policies or protocols kind of put into place that kind of advance to what we have for tornado warnings and for, you know, invaders in the school and things like that. I feel like with my background, I have a pretty good understanding of what goes on on the, let's see, the law side of it, not so much in the school side of it. And being able to bring those two things together. And then lastly, probably will be as good as Raymond here about assisting with balancing the budget, because I'm not a CPA, but obviously, you know, our school board does help with the budgeting and with, you know, approving buildings and things like that for renovations. And it'd be, you know, an honor to be a part of those decisions and bringing things to better the school.
Okay, thank you. You get to go first again this time. I'm going to combine a question that came from the audience also with one that we have. The one from the audience is this, what experiences or characteristics do you bring that will help you being on the school board? And one of the questions we had in the moderation was, what strengths would you bring to the board? And we kind of want to know your weaknesses as well. So, what experiences or characteristics can you bring to the school board? Chris, you go first, please.
All right. It was kind of hard to think of this question and think of an answer that would truly reflect myself and without just giving the right answer. But being a firefighter really has taught me to work as a team and allowed me to learn the responsibilities of leadership and the principles of developing plans and working through those plans to accomplish near impossible tasks. And so, taking that experience from being in leadership positions and also being members of a team that, working together to find a common goal and a common way to get to that goal, and working through those things. And a lot of times, it's a give-take relationship in the school board, as anything. And there's good and there's bad and everything. And so, I think to be able to be a part of that team and help make those decisions and to find that balance would be a strength. A weakness, I work a lot, and so, my full-time schedule as a firefighter, it can be busy. And so, it takes a lot of balancing in my personal life to find, to find that balance and that timeframe to apply to where I need to be, you know, equally distributed that time.
Sure. Well, we appreciate that. It's hard to express your own weaknesses. Nobody wants those questions. Raymond?
Over the years, of course, I am several years older than Chris. I've been involved in several boards and that I have worked with for several years. Sometimes, the only way to get off of a board is to either move away or die. And I decided to move away. And right now, I'm involved in the Oklahoma AAU Association, which is, does athletics for young children all across the state. We have competitions for basketball, softball, volleyball. And so, I've been their treasurer for 18 years now. Getting involved with that when my kids were a little bit younger. And when they seem to find a good board member, they tend to want you to stay on board. So, I would think my strengths would be, I've been on boards before, I know how they operate, and sometimes don't operate that well. And I'd like to put that experience to work perhaps in Crescent. And my weaknesses are, you understand, I'm an accountant. And all the jokes about accounting not liking people, that's pretty much true. So, I'm not the people person that Chris is, there's no doubt about that. But I have been working on that over the years, and I'm better than I used to be.
You get lots of practice around here, so that's one thing for sure. Again, it's hard to express your weaknesses and your strengths in the public forum, and so we appreciate you doing that. Another question we have, Ray, you'll start this one off. We know that sometimes board members get confronted by patrons from the school district, whether on the street, at the grocery store, or by phone, or whatever that with a, with a concern that they have. And so, the question is, what will be your response when you, not if, but when, you are confronted by a parent, patron, concerning something that they're having a struggle with or a problem with here at school? What will be your response to that kind of, I don't want to say confrontation, but that kind of concern expressed by a patron?
Luckily, no one knows what I look like. Now, they will with the camera, of course, but that hasn't happened quite so much. But in my job, I get phone calls every day from people who have concerns, some legitimate, some not so much. But you have to be respectful to everyone that talks to you at all times. There's no need to turn any confrontation or any meeting into a situation where it's not a pleasant. There's one thing that you need to go through life with is, people come first. And that is in any regard. Now, I understand someone talking to me, I cannot make a change, but I can listen to a person and get their concerns, bring it to the people who may be able to address that concern better than I can. But anybody who has a concern, there may be some truth or something that needs to be at least listened to in everybody's concerns.
Chris?
I agree with him as far as the listening and being respectful. In my job, and you know, we get confronted a lot by people that either are having the worst day of their life, or just about their in general. And most people just need to be listened to. And offering them that ear and then pointing them in the direction that they need to go to get those concerns addressed. And whether it be, in my job, we have a chain of command, we refer them to our officer. But in this, in this position, you know, it would be to hear people out, to allow them the opportunity to voice their opinions in a respectful manner, of course, and then to show them how to get those things put on the agenda to talk about at a school board meeting, or to point them in the right direction of where they need to go for that.
Good answers, thank you. This is going fast, we don't have a lot of questions from the audience. We're going to open up here in just a minute, but Chris, the final question that we have tonight, and this is going fast, but that's okay. What do you see is the most pressing concern in public education at this time?
Well, everything goes back to students. And the way, the things that I see and the things that my kids experience and talking with some of the students in the high school, things that bother them are, you know, a lot of times, aren't being able to have that one-on-one experience with their teachers, the time sometimes it takes for them to understand and grasp concepts. So, to be able to provide and facilitate either a plan or having some type of option for students to get information presented more than one way, or to have, be able to find, like I said, give and take, but find that position for students to have that more one-on-one contact with either with a teacher or with a tutoring program, or something that they feel that they're getting the educational needs satisfied.
Ray?
The biggest concern for education at the immediate time right now is financial. I understand that it shouldn't come first, and that's all well and good, but we're going to be in a period of extreme budget cuts in the next three to four years. There's no way around it. It looks like the gross production tax is going to tremendously fall off the table. Perhaps not this year, because it's, I think it's a year in arrears, but next year, that's going to fall off 55 to 60 percent. The adverbal tax base is every year, the bigger corporations are trying to fight the assessments that the accounting assessor makes, and they're trying to lower their adverbal taxes. Each dollar they get lowered, it's a dollar that the school won't have to spend in their overall budget. So, the biggest immediate concern for the school districts has got to be the budget and financial planning for the next three to five years.
Okay. That's going to be our next question. As a school board member, with the shortage of funds, we've already heard schools have been cut, was it 3% between now and the end of this fiscal school year, and looking towards more next year? So, I know, you know, you're not on the school board, you don't know the numbers, you don't have them in hand. Well, what do you do as a school board member when you're faced with having to maybe cut programs, cut teachers, or something like that, when you're tens of thousands of dollars, or maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars short in what your budget called for? Chris, go ahead with this one.
All right. Man, that's a deep question. As a school board member, I mean, you're going to, you have to find a balance, and you have to work as together to come up with the best possible solution. Nobody wants to see anybody lose a job or a place for a teacher, or a classroom, or a program at the school. And so, there's going to have to be give and takes. There's a lot of things that have recently that have been developing, such as the four-day school week, things like that, that they've brought to the forefront and they've talked about and are making decisions on that are supposed to help with those things. Yeah. It comes to a point where you have to decide, you know, what is necessary and what isn't for the best outcome for the child.
Ray?
Money is important for a school. However, they're going to have to make some alternate plans when the budget is cut. And money does not equate education per se, it's a help to get to the end result. We've been to countries, Bosnia, where we visited schools that were one, two-room schools that had 35, 40 kids in a classroom with a teacher that rotates through. Education was taking place, you could tell that it was. The kids enjoyed the school, was enjoying their opportunity to learn. It's important that our children realize that the opportunity to learn can be had even when times are harder than what they would like for them to be. And they need to have respect for the educational system that we had in any given time. And maybe it's flush, maybe it's a little bit poor, but education can still go on.
Okay, thank you. There's certain levels in the state and around the state, there have been conversations between people about the consolidation of smaller school districts, where they would have one superintendent over three or four facilities, or something like that. What's your opinion on something like that taking place in Oklahoma? Raymond, you'll go first with this, please.
The school district, the local school is the heart of the community. It must be saved at all costs. And it's important that the local community come together and say, "We are, we want to invest in our local school district." We know best, the families, the churches and the school are the heart of any community. So, the school needs to stay in place. That being said, the patrons of the school district are going to have to understand that if they want to keep their school district, it's going to mean that the millage rates may have to go up to help fund their local education. The state money is going to be reduced. And if you want to keep the same level of education, that has to be made up somewhere. And you can't do it by cake sales. It's got to be done by millage increases on the local district.
Chris, thoughts on that?
I agree with him as far as, you know, the schools and churches are definitely the heart of our community. And without that, we don't have a whole lot here in Crescent. So, at all costs, it does need to be saved. To share a superintendent or to share school districts, it would definitely draw away from the tenderness needed to run the school. So, if, I mean, if we shared a superintendent and a superintendent's office with us in Guthrie, it would definitely would not have the fluidity of the current administration. It would be harder to address issues in an individual school. And like I said, it basically comes down to funding and to finding a position in our community, or finding that balance between where people desire the school district to be and what they're willing to pay for.
So, your thoughts similar on... So your thoughts similar on that, say if there was a consolidation of actual school districts, where two districts would combine, like we've seen in some of our other rural counties, where the population has, has just decreased so much that some nearby schools have, have combined, or perhaps with that combination, two towns make up a school board? Chris, give us a little more, bit more on something like that, instead of just a superintendent, like a CEO overseeing a larger group of schools, but...
I have a, a friend that lived in western Oklahoma for a long time, and his school board, or his school system wasn't meeting criteria for the state, and financially, or, you know, they couldn't keep the lights on, and so the state came in and they ended up closing the school and consolidating with another school. And he said, you know, talking with him and his experiences about it, having that, the people that lived in the town having to bust their children out every day, and, you know, slowly the town began to dwindle, and now there's just, you know, elderly people without kids that live there, and farmers and, and things like that, and, and most everyone with kids moved away. And, you know, this, this town is, is my world. I was born here and raised here and lived my whole life here, and I would, I would hate to, to see anything happen like that. So I think whatever it takes to, to keep the town alive and to keep, keep our school alive is very important.
Right?
I went to a small school in western Oklahoma that, that Crescent dwarfs in socks, and when I was, maybe it was junior high, when a school was forced to consolidate with our, with our high school from a small town, and they had to travel twenty-five miles on the bus to get to our school. Well, that town now, when you drive through it, is basically gone. You, you see a couple of old labbed buildings, the school building was torn down. You don't want that for a town. A town cannot survive without a local school district. So I am a hundred percent opposed to consolidation of small schools into large schools. The education that you get in a smaller school environment is, in my opinion, so much better than you can get in a larger school situation. Plus, you're, in some ti, in some instances, you're, you're throwing together students that don't have the same history and the same background into a situation where they may not mingle or co-mingle as well as they do in their existing school district. We're trying to, a school district is trying to prepare a student for the future workforce, and they don't need to have extracurricular problems that the consolidations may incur.
Okay. I had someone give me several questions, and they're good questions, so we're gonna use them. We got, we got some time here. On a positive side, we know there's gonna be some struggles over the next few years, that's evident, writing's on the wall, but what is your vision? What do you see for the Crescent School District in, say, five years, ten years, on down the road? What would you like to see the Crescent School District look like?
Well, there's no doubt, if current patterns continue, Logan County is growing about twenty percent every twelve years in population. Once they complete the Highway seventy-four improvement, I suspect that there would be a, a, may not a large influx, but an influx of people moving away from Putnam City area to get to a better school district. Crescent must have a better school district to attract future expansion of those people or their move to other opportunities. And I think that is a great situation that Crescent can have by attracting more people, more, just like we moved from Putnam City area to Crescent for the people, and for the lifestyle, and for the morals, and for the quality of life.
Chris?
Over the, you know, next five to ten years, I too would like to see, you know, the school become a beacon, not only in this community, but in this whole area, where it does draw people and families to our town, to have our education second to none, and I think that just involves getting teachers what they need to teach the kids and to, to provide that opportunity for students. And in doing that, I mean, we have to provide for a school and, and be able to make those decisions and to, you know, make it attractive to, to new kind of families.
Okay. Over the past few years, we've seen a shift some, in, in education processes, and there's always changes, and there's always enhancements, some work out well, some don't. We, we've kind of had some struggles in our own school district with technology, both good and bad. And so where do you stand on the use of, of technology, let's say, using the, the computer explicitly for, instead of a textbook, using a web-based computer program and some technologies like that, versus some old-fashioned textbooks?
Well, from my generation, I'm very big on computers. I, I, I use a computer every day, and I think it's an important thing for students to, to learn how to use a computer and how to learn from a computer. At the same time, I also am involved with several high schoolers and individuals in life that they don't necessarily like just having a computer. Some of them feel that it's leaned on too heavy. There needs to be, you know, a balance of computer instruction and, and responsibility of a teacher instructing the students also.
Right?
That's an interesting question, and one that's been talked about many, many times over the years. The technology has changed so quickly. My wife was a teacher at Putnam City Schools for several years, and the, and the one new thing that came out was a little, it wasn't an iPad back then, but I forgot what they called it, but they used it and it was thought, it was, it was the top of technology for the time. And now that particular technology is completely useless, and if a person didn't learn how to think and how to learn new technologies, then they would be still stuck in the old Learning and, and knowing how to think never go out of style. Being a problem solver will never go out of style. Sometimes they use the new technology more as a crutch than a learning tool, and we have to teach children how to learn, just not what's buttons to push. That probably sounds a little old-fashioned, and I understand that, but work never goes out of style.
Well, we, we have had here in, in the Crescent School District, some very clear lines drawn over technology, especially in a math program that has been used over the last few years, and so it's a valid question for us. When do you use technology? When do you use books? How do you use it? And so it's, it's gonna be a continuing problem, or a challenge, let's say, not necessarily a problem, but a challenge as we utilize that new technology in the new modern world, because they're talking about we need to be training children for jobs that aren't even invented yet. So how do you do that? That's why we have teachers, so, on that. And that's all the questions that were given to me, written. Does anybody have any question they'd like to have? We have a small group, so it's okay to, to do, ask a question, something you heard, or something you'd like explained a little better? No? Okay. Well, we appreciate the audience showing up and being a part of this. Gentlemen, we appreciate you're coming here and being put on the spot, sharing with us your hearts and your visions, and also, again, your willingness to come and serve, to be a candidate. We, as a, a school district, I believe, will be fortunate to have either one of you gentlemen serving on our board, and we look forward to that. You have some challenges ahead of you, whoever serves on that board, and I want to encourage everybody to register a vote, and the election will be on February ninth, and for those here in the Crescent area, it's down at the community center, please go out and vote. Examine the, the words and the ideas these men have expounded tonight, and make a good choice. I think what we've heard is that we have two good candidates to choose from. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and thank you for your attendance. Appreciate it.